Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the school committee on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to receive and accept the resignation of Superintendent Farmer for the purpose of his retirement effective June 30th, 2016. And you all have a copy of that here? Do we receive and note that? I don't think, I feel like saying, is that something we're all in favor of, but that's okay. The next item on our agenda is to go through the process for the appointment of the next superintendent of schools. Glenn Kuchar is here. He's the executive director of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. He will talk to us on alternative approaches to conducting a search for a new superintendent of schools. Mr. Kuchar. I'm sorry.
Chair members of the school committee, we provided you with sort of checklist of what we call the oh-my-God document. When people call us and say, oh, my God, we now will have a vacancy in the superintendency. There are many options available to the school committee, all of which are at the discretion of the school committee. The law makes no requirements of you whatsoever, other than that you hire a superintendent in public. So now that you know the superintendent is leaving, you could make me the superintendent tonight. You have that much discretion. Now, I make a joke about it, but it's actually true. So the first thing we ask a district to think about is what options would you like to consider Districts fall into three or four different categories. In about a third of our districts, the school committee will just proceed immediately and appoint an internal candidate if an internal candidate has been prepared and is ready and is acceptable to the school committee. As a second option, the school committee may choose to cast a net and conduct a search, either on its own or with help, review the candidates, invite internal candidates to apply. And in about half of those instances, an internal candidate is appointed, half an external candidate's appointed. And in the third situation, you mount a full, formal, official search and go through a lot of the steps that take place: recruiting, advertising, forming a search committee, putting the candidates through an interview, and then a subsequent public process. My experience has been that whichever option the school committee elects, if you're straight with the community, they will follow your lead. So those districts which have just gone ahead and made an internal appointment have been universally accepted by the community, with the exception of those situations where there's corruption, fiscal irregularities, or some type of problem. You're in the fortunate position, despite being unfortunate to be losing an outstanding superintendent, but you're in the fortunate position of being in a very good place, in a very good district, that, I don't want to say this to understate it, but that simply needs to be led to whatever greater heights you can pursue. And that means that I don't think the public is looking over your shoulder, attempting to second-guess everything you do out of dissatisfaction. I suspect the community is very pleased with the leadership of its school committee and its school district. Last year, just as a matter of policy, we urge districts to consider in-house candidates before they look outside for the following reason: when a superintendency is vacant, the superintendent of Muncie, Indiana, who may wish to return to the Northeast, is going to ask several questions. They're going to call the School Board Association and the Superintendents' Association in their state, and they're going to say, first of all, why is the superintendent leaving? And if the superintendent is retiring after a very honorable career, that's the best situation. If a superintendent is being fired, if there's a deeply split committee, if there are fiscal irregularities, that will intimidate candidates. The second question they'll ask is, what is the financial situation like in the community? Will I have to come in and sell a bond to fund the schools? Are we facing bankruptcy? Are we facing serious financial trouble? Number three, is there an internal candidate? Because if there is an internal candidate, half of them will be scared away right away. If it's a strong internal candidate, three-quarters of them will be scared off right away. And I guarantee you that no one in this community is more than two degrees of separation away from Muncie, Indiana. So someone's going to be able to make two calls or three and find out what the status of the situation is. So we urge school committees, before you invest a lot of time and a lot of money, to consider the personnel that you have within your community, to see whether that would be your most appropriate situation. Two years ago, Swampscott, Marblehead, and two or three other communities, all in the Northeast quadrant, just made internal promotions and moved on. And because those were communities that were in good standing, there was little concern among the communities. They're doing well right now. So we have ample precedent in Massachusetts for people just doing that. And then we have plenty of people who do extensive searches, which they manage themselves, and we provide technical assistance to districts that do that. And then we have districts that mount full searches and hire consultants and spend a lot of money to find people who would find you anyway. I say that because most of the people who apply for superintenencies in Massachusetts, the overwhelming majority of them, find the district from the websites of the State School Boards Association and the State Superintendents' Association. Everybody who's looking, looks there to find out what's open. For those districts that elect not to conduct a formal process but to deal with an internal promotional situation, several of them have worked with us to develop a fairly rigorous internal vetting process. That includes inviting internal candidates to apply and conducting a very diligent and thorough interview for the public to observe. I don't, actually, are we on television? We are? Okay. An internal vetting process that would include meeting with the academic stakeholders, maybe a meeting with the community, and certainly an extensive public interview with the school committee. Brockton, which was a highly politically-charged community, made an internal promotion after two nights of interviews with the internal candidate. Very thorough. The community was very pleased. The internal candidate has been serving successfully, and there's been very little dissent on that particular issue. And the districts that did do the internal promotion preceded by a public vetting have been very happy with what they did. But only you know the situation that's best for your district, so only you can make that determination. There are some communities that believe that, the school committees that believe the community demands that there be a search process, so that they be convinced that they're getting the best superintendent. If you elect that path, I would encourage you to consider managing that search with your own internal resources. We provide extensive technical assistance to people who do that. There's no sense in throwing $20,000, $30,000 at a process to buy a recruiting base that, from somebody else, that you get for free from us. But that's a local decision. Now, that's a very brief summary of how things work. I will tell you that we are finding the pools of candidates for the superintendency are significantly smaller than they were a generation or two ago. I can speak to that because two generations ago, I was doing superintendent searches. In my first search in 1975, 120 people wanted to be the superintendent in Cambridge, Massachusetts. The last two times they've gone out, all of their candidates were from the greater Boston area, and they were lucky to have two or three first-tier candidates applying. The reason? Early retirement has taken people out of the system sooner than they've ever gone before. People 57 and 58 years old have maxed out on their retirement benefit, whereas 30 years ago, people worked to 65 and 70 routinely in the public schools. Item number two: usually, if there is a relocation involved, there is another adult in the household who is a professional, looking for a good job and a good salary. 30, 35 years ago, you would have hired a superintendent, he would have come, and the family would have followed. Now, it's just as likely that the superintendent will be a female or a male, and it is highly likely that there will be another professional in the household, whoever it is, another adult who's going to want a decent job and may not be able to just pick up and relocate. So that makes it difficult. Third, the regulatory climate. Without question, Massachusetts has the most hostile regulatory climate for schools of any state in the country. You come to Massachusetts, you know that no matter how good you are, you are probably going to suffer some type of sanction in some way, despite your success. You are among the districts that have helped make Massachusetts students the highest-performing students in the country, and in many regards, in the world. Yet Massachusetts has the highest percentage of schools in some type of state offered sanction than any other state, because of the regulatory climate in Massachusetts. Now, for those of you who have lived your whole life here, you're probably used to the regulation and punishment culture of the way the educational bureaucracy works. A lot of other people are not, and they don't want to come to Massachusetts and deal with it. And finally, believe it or not, there are a lot of people in this country who have never seen snow themselves, and are daunted by cold, and daunted by what they believe to be weather hazards, and don't want to come here and fight the winter. For some people, the cost of living can be obstruction as well, but you'd have to do an assessment and get a sense of what that brings. So as I say, the pools are not nearly as great as they are. Although the candidates are good, we're seeing more people trying to become superintendents from the special education directorates and the principalships, and even middle school and elementary principalships. In fact, we had one superintendent who went from one side of the bargaining table to the other when he was hired as a superintendent from his classroom in Mashpee three years ago. Yes?
Yes.
So I'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. I can tell you that whichever option you elect, if you need some technical assistance and support from us, that's available to you as an MASC member without any kind of a fee, if you wish to proceed with any one of the options that I've described to you, with the exception of if you decide to do a full search and you want a search consultant, that's another story.
Anyone have questions?
I do have a question. Glenn, in past years, we've heard a lot about the number of openings of superintendent positions in the state, and the number of interns being appointed, many coming out of retirement to serve. I don't know if you have a number for, you know, November 10th, but last year, could you give us an estimate of how many positions were open across the state?
I know two years ago, we had 19 interim superintenencies filled by retired superintendents. Last year, probably a dozen. This year, maybe nine to 12 at the moment, but before the end of the year, we will have mid-year retirements as well. With regard to vacancies, at this time, there are about 10 superintendent searches going on in Massachusetts at the moment. Those are districts that have elected not to make internal promotions. We've probably had new superintendents this year. We probably have a dozen superintendents who were promoted internally, and then, I don't know, maybe another 20 who were selected as the result of some type of a search process.
Monique?
Glenn, the deliberations that need to be done to decide on a course of action, in terms of, are we going to go internal, are we going to have a search committee? Is that done publicly?
Yes.
Or is that?
It's done publicly.
All right. So that's done.
Right now.
The open-meeting law is very, very, very strictly enforced in Massachusetts, and it's made the superintendent searching process, this is another thing, it's made it very difficult. You can have an initial screening and an initial interview in executive session, provided a majority of the school committee is not on the screening committee. So there are nine of you. You know, you could have four of you serving on a search committee. A majority of you are not allowed to be your initial screening and interview committee for purposes of using the executive session. So that means that only some of the school committee members would be able to participate, but the planning process to get ready for the search is not part of the initial screening and interview, which is authorized under executive session. Now, there are situations where superintendents are being involuntarily terminated, and hearings about whether to dismiss a public employee can be held in executive session. So sometimes, some of the preliminaries occur in executive session when it's allowed, but not under a situation where a superintendent retires.
So a subcommittee would be put together and decide a course of action, and then make a recommendation to the committee in public?
No, I'm sorry.
No?
A subcommittee would meet to do the initial screening and interviewing of candidates.
Of candidates.
If you had a, a subcommittee is subject to the open-meeting law, and the process for determining what you'd like to do is not eligible for executive session.
I just want to, item B, under capital B, to consider the advice received and develop process and timeline for the appointment of the Superintendent Farmer successor. I would like us to have that discussion tonight, and hopefully come up with a plan, which way to go. One of the reasons that Mr. Farmer turned in his retirement letter now is so that we could proceed and hopefully have the process completed before we get into budget season. So I really would like us to leave here tonight, having made a decision as to which of the alternatives we would like to do.
There is a two-pronged strategy that you might think about considering. One is to conduct an initial internal application process, to vet your internal candidates. And then, if you don't find an internal candidate that satisfies you, then go to the external process, because you will have far fewer candidates if they're competing against an internal candidate or a strong internal candidate in particular, than you will if you've ruled out your internal candidates and want to go to the external pool. So generally, we ask a school committee to think about doing an internal process first, if there is an internal candidate who would be viable, but that's for you to decide.
Linda, did you have a question? Oh, sorry. Paul?
Glenn, I just have, can you just explain the screening process? That's done in executive session?
The, if you have a vacancy and you invite people to apply, the initial screening of applicants and the initial interview itself can take place in executive session, but only if it's not the school committee. If it's the school committee acting as its own initial screening committee, then the interview has to take place in public, and the vetting has to take place in public.
Okay, so in order for it to be executive session, we'd have to hire somebody, then?
In order, no. In order to have an executive session, you'd have to have a search committee on which a minority of the school committee could serve. So, I mean, let's say hypothetically, you elected to conduct a search and to cast a wide net. You might consider appointing the search committee. And I would suggest that there be several members of the school committee on that search committee, frankly, no offense to anybody, to keep the faculty from hijacking your process. When a search committee is created, the faculty immediately mobilizes to do what's in its best interest. And I'm not trying to offend anybody, I'm just suggesting, that's what always happens. So what we would recommend to you is you might have a nine-member or a 12-member search committee with three or four members of the school committee and the balance comprised of, you know, educators and community members, but not a majority of employees of the district. Then, they would be able to, a search committee would then be able to go into executive session to review the applicants and to interview the applicants for an initial round. They would then recommend a second-round candidates to the school committee for a public process. The school committee cannot use the executive session process to interview or screen candidates unless they're talking about ethic, physical and mental health, or character and reputation.
Just a follow-up. So if you were to put three members of this school committee on this search committee, and they went into executive session, that doesn't violate public law?
No, because it's not a majority of the school committee. Now, when the law was reauthorized, the open-meeting law, we believed that the language of the open-meeting law allowed the school committee to be its own initial screening committee, but the Attorney General disagreed, and the Attorney General is the person who interprets the law. So while we believe legislative intent was not honored, we're not in a position to win that battle right now.
Dick?
In regards to the search process, we are the sole determinator whether or not we want to cast a wide net or do a controlled search.
That's correct.
Period. End of it. Okay. All right, fine. Thank you.
The process you just described was for external candidates, or does it apply to internal candidates as well?
Well, if you did an internal search process, you could have an initial screening and interview committee for the internal search process, provided that an open process would discourage candidates and undermine the search. However, usually, the internal process is not held in executive session, because the public tends to demand a public interview for that kind of thing.
But when you said the committee, that includes the faculty and interested community members and?
Well, the school committee can set up any process you like.
Or internal candidates.
That's correct. And, for example, when this, when this process was sort of first developed in Westboro about 10 or 12 years ago, they set up a day of interviews for their assistant superintendent, who was interviewed by parents, teachers, and community members, and then at the end of the day, by the school committee. And they were satisfied that they were looking at a candidate that they thought would be an excellent superintendent for their district. Now, this candidate had been mentored for the position, prepared for the position, members of the school committee had encouraged the superintendent to groom this person for the position. So what they did was, they set up a day of public interviews to show the community that they were doing the right thing. And in the case of the North Shore communities, same thing happened. Public interviews to demonstrate to the community that the internal candidate that they were looking at was a very acceptable candidate, who could meet the standards set by the community. And we have, we have an extensive array of sample interviews, model interviews, timely questions for 2015 and 16, all of which would be available to the school committee upon request as a member.
Dick?
In your experience, what has been the overriding criteria, whether it be continuity or an internal candidate or whatever, that seems to bring the most common consensus to an appointment of a new superintendent?
Districts that are not in trouble are looking for continuity, continuity of the stability of its curriculum, continuity of student performance, continuity of communications with the, with the community, and continuity of fiscal stability. Then you look to the professional and character traits that people tend to look for, invariably, no matter what kind of a survey you do. And we can also put up an online survey for you as well. People are looking for superiority in communications. They tend to accept as a given that there's curriculum and fiscal expertise, either in the district or with the candidate, because if there weren't, there would be some type of a crisis, and people would know it. They're also looking not to have to do this again for several more years. So the process normally comes with an extrication of a commitment, that this is not a three-and-out kind of process, and we'd like you to stay for a while and be here. It also, there are often concerns around knowledge of special education, because that's a very important topic, and knowledge of state and federal applicable regulations, which is what terrifies out-of-state candidates, but doesn't particularly frighten people who are already working here and are just used to it.
Follow-up question?
Well, I just want to say something, want all of you to think about, and one of them is an MASC document, but the other thing is, if, if the committee feels that the school district has been on a positive path, and thinks that that positive path should continue, then it makes sense to look internally at a candidate that would be following the positive path. The other issue is, and I brought this up a few years ago, a document that I found on the MASC website citing the benefits to student achievement when there is a consistent positive path that is followed, from one year to the next, and one decade to the next. It enhances student achievement. So go ahead.
Okay. The follow-up question I have, Glenn, is on number three of the first steps, how much public participation must you have? There's A, B, C, and D. Out of those, without, I don't anticipate us spending $30,000, $40,000 to cast a wide net. So out of those four criteria, process steps, which ones do you feel are the most important to proceed with without casting a wide net?
Well, C and D can be very important. That question is there because communities respond differently. I'm not going to name these communities, because it's not appropriate, but there are certain places where everything is a long discussion. Everything involves reams of process. Nothing happens quickly. As I say, I'm not going to name those communities. I'd love to, but I wouldn't be doing this job for him. So... So, but, but I will tell you that, that, um, there was a community that hired a superintendent from the greater northeast Massachusetts area several years ago that sent 10 teams of parents on a site visit because everybody wanted to be involved. So, as I say, some communities are very happy to say, "We elected a school committee. Would you please take care of this and, by the way, keep the achievement levels high?" And then there are those that say, "Well, we need a planning committee, we need a resume review committee, we need a question development committee, we need an interview committee, we need a post-committee, assessment committee, we need a committee to coordinate the committees." It, it really can be extremely frustrating, uh, because everything becomes process. And that's the culture in some places. And my, I come from Cambridge, Massachusetts. It's, you know, Cambridge and Amherst, people would rather go to a meeting than go to dinner. And nobody seems to be in a hurry to eat.
Does anyone else who has not had a, asked a question, have any questions?
Can I ask a question, Deb? Glenn, in your experience, um, you had mentioned about you want a superintendent who can be in the position for a certain length of time. What is the average tenure of a superintendent now in this Commonwealth?
The average tenure is about three to four years, but that's largely because of retirement.
Okay.
See, in the, in the seventies and eighties, you might become a superintendent at the age of 50, and you might work 15 years in the same district and move along. Now, you become a superintendent, you get to 57 and you leave. Your successor maybe starts at 54, gets to 57 or 58, and leaves. So, while the superintendent searching business has become a very lucrative one for some people, it's become very disruptive to a lot of districts who go through superintendents very quickly. Rarely is a superintendent fired. It's mostly due to retirement. Or, I mean, someone leaves to take another job and then someone comes in and fills the hole.
And I guess as a, a follow-up comment to that, I mean, it, it goes to Deb's point before that we want to get somebody in here who is committed to this district for more than three years. I mean, three years is really a knot of great length of time to get a lot done.
And, and there are some strategies you can use to assure that, like a contract of employment that provides a, uh, contract completion bonus, or incentives provided at the end of the contract. Or, um, rollover provisions that provide that, you know, if you're, if you're working well and it works, we'll extend another year at the end so that you're always far ahead. Now, that is, those are risks that districts rarely take with superintendents that they don't know. But it is, uh, a very prudent, uh, moderate risk that people take with superintendents that they do.
Thank you.
Paul?
I actually have a question for you, Deb and Deana. You two, um, were on this committee years ago, and I'm just wondering, I know our community was in a different place then, but what can you share with us about what you did then versus what you think we should do now?
Well, Deb, you want me to? Well, we both can, but, go ahead, you can start.
Um, I came in at a very, very tumultuous time in this district. Deana was following me shortly after there. It's really two completely different eras, very, very different eras. I, I've, I've worked with three superintendents and, um, it's just, it's, there really is no comparison between the district under the leadership of Mr. Farmer compared to, um, what we had previously for a variety of reasons, but the level of openness in the last five years is unparalleled, absolutely unparalleled. Um, you know, and so that means that people, we have a, we have a huge positive feeling in the district relative to that. And it all has to do with the administration that's been in place for the last five years.
As Deb said, she was on the committee when there was the superintendent search. I was not on the committee then, I was elected that May, so I was involved as a public member and PTA member, school council, all of that. So I saw it from the other side of the table, and I agree with Deb that the culture now is so much different than it was then. We did a, a larger search. It wasn't, you know, by consultant, we had MASC do that search. Mike Gilbert was our representative then. It's, it's time-consuming. It, as, as a public, uh, or as a community member, it was sometimes confusing as to why things were being done, they were, the way they were being done. Quite honestly, I think the culture that we're in now, since we have a much better relationship with not only the community members, but with our town officials and, and, uh, town administrators and things, I personally would like to see us do an internal search before we did anything else. As Deb had stated, you know, um, Mr. Farmer has given his resignation in order to give us enough time to, to get things in place, and I thank him for that because that shows his, his depth of, of care and concern for this district, as well as his, his desire to, to keep things moving forward. So I personally would like to, to try an internal search before we did another big search.
I just have one quick follow-up. I, I think we should defer to you two somewhat on what the community needs, or what their expectations are, because you've been there.
Can I just add one thing? And that is, I was not on the school committee, um, when Mr. Farmer was hired, but I was a parent rep on the search committee, committee. And we had the wide net thrown and, um, we went from 15 candidates that were very, they all looked great on paper, and we came down to two pretty quickly, which kind of talks to the, how many really strong candidates are you going to get? And I can remember in Mr. Farmer's interview in the auditorium, he was asked the question by the school committee at that point, because it had gone out of our hands to, um, the school committee members, and he was asked one of the things, you know, that he thinks he does really well. And he said, "I think I mentor and I grow leaders very well." And I think he has done exactly that while he has been here. We've seen a lot of, um, assistant principals go on to principalships. I mean, people aren't leaving here, um, because they're not happy with the district. They're growing in their profession and they're going on to even, um, higher positions. And so I think the work he's done here in mentoring and grooming leaders, which talks to the sustainability of this district beyond his tenure, I think that's worth doing the internal search first. I do like the idea of, um, that vetting committee that is made up of just a, maybe three of us, but would certainly include parents, um, some faculty. We even had a student on, um, and I would ask you really what you recommend as far as size and makeup, um, for that, but that's the process. I think I'd support.
Um, Paul, I want to thank you for the respect of the question. I think, I, I appreciate that. I have a list here. I, I, first of all, can, can I get a feel from people as to how many of you would like to begin with, with, um, the internal search? Can you see? Okay, good. Internally, I have a list of people here within the school district who are either already licensed to be superintendents or in the process of doing that. There's a total of six people. Total of six people. How many of them might apply, who knows? But there are a total of six people who are even, that's the largest possible number that could be. So I think, keeping in mind that if we're going to do an internal search, that the maximum number of candidates would be, I would say, anywhere from two to six. There are two that are currently qualified and ready to go. The others are either pending or inactive or something, but there are two that are ready to go right now. So, um, it could very likely be two at the most who apply for the job. So, because of the small number, I'm not sure how many vetting committees we would need, how much of a, how many layers we would need. That's my suggestion. That if there are only going to be two or three candidates, um, my suggestion would be that the, those people, the applicants, be interviewed in a public meeting by all of us, using some of the tools that Glenn has available.
Actually, the, the value of the executive session is so that someone from another district does not put their position in the other district at risk by applying for the superintendency. And if, if, if I'm here in your district, as one of your administrators, and we think that we're all having a wonderful relationship, and you find out that I'm now going to be dancing with Wakefield, looking for their superintendency, and they're not looking for a superintendency, I just threw that name out, my relationship with you could be severely impaired, and that's why I would want an executive session. If somebody's already here, uh, they're probably not worried about how it would be if they applied for the superintendency here and did not receive it, in terms of, uh, applying internally here would be a show of respect for the district, as opposed to applying for a superintendency elsewhere, might be shown as maybe an element of dissatisfaction with where they are. So I, you, you probably need less executive session opportunities, but what you may wish to do is to conduct a multiple interview process where the school committee gets to interview, the faculty gets to interview, you could have as many interview committees as you like in order to expedite that, and people can give their feedback to the school committee. Generally, when this happens, uh, usually only the most serious candidates come forward, and most, most people who have a superintendency certification, uh, don't necessarily use it to seek the superintendency. They use it for another positions. So I, I doubt that you'd see six applicants.
I, yeah, I, I agree with that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, I'm asking this question, I'm asking the committee and I'm asking your opinion also. One way to go would be to post this internally and then see how many people apply for the position. And then, when we see how many people apply for the position, that might help us determine what the next step would be. Is that? How does?
Yeah, but even if there was only one candidate, we'd still have to go through an interview.
Yes.
Public interview process with the parents and.
Well, Glenn, well, Glenn mentioned it would be a vetting at that point.
You would go through whatever process you believe is necessary, but you legally don't have to go through much of a process at all. If theoretically you got one candidate, you could say, "Let's make that candidate the superintendent," and no public interview at all, but it might not fare well with the community or with the faculty. So, a, a public vetting process can be very happy, and I think a candidate becoming superintendent would appreciate being legitimized through a process like that.
Is that an acceptable, um, outline or agenda for the committee to, um, open the applications up, see how many candidates apply for the position, and then we would have a public vetting? And the specific form of that would be determined when we get a little closer to it?
You would, if you did that, though, you'd want to make sure that the candidates knew, that the candidates would be vetted in public.
Yes, yeah. Deana?
I'm, I'm trying to think of what the timeline would be, um, and, and of a date that we would want to put for applicants to submit their names. I, I do, Glenn, do you have any suggestions on that?
Get it out by the 15th of Nov-, uh, 15th of November. I suppose you could, you could do an announcement by the 15th of November, have it close in two weeks, and the first week in December, start interviewing.
Okay.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable, Christopher?
Some, by the way, you may have a provision in your collective bargaining agreement that requires you to post all positions internally anyway. We've actually had, we've actually had unions grieve the superintendent search process if there wasn't a separate, special posting, uh, for internal candidates to apply with everyone else. So I, you might want to consult your collective bargaining agreement and see whether.
Right, but.
You're required to do this for X number of days.
Oh, X number of days. All right, we can check that, but, um.
But if you keep it open for two weeks, you've, you've done your due diligence.
Okay.
I guess I'm not clear why the process by which we would vet whether there were one or six candidates would be different. We, we know we'd have six at the most. So I guess I'm wondering, rather than putting off what kind of committee will vet them, why shouldn't we make that decision tonight so that whoever's applying knows there will be a teacher panel, there will be maybe a parent panel, there will be, I'm not saying that that's what it should be, but.
No, I didn't say that, that we wouldn't vet them. I said that we would eliminate the screening process. If there's a very small number of candidates, you wouldn't necessarily need to have a screening process. What I'm saying, if there are two candidates, why would we not publicly interview both of them?
Okay, so I guess I was confused, the difference between a screening process and a interviewing.
Well, the, the screening would be to take the applications and decide whom to actually interview. However, we generally recommend that if you have internal candidates, even in a general search, that you always interview your internal candidates.
Well, that's, I would have assumed we'd interview everyone that put in for it, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We don't need, I don't think we need a screening. We don't need to winnow down the field.
Okay, right, but.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, right, I agree with that, but I'm saying, shouldn't we agree tonight that, when it's, we know what the interviewing makeup will be?
Who's going to, who's going to be doing the interviewing? Well, sure, we can do that, but I did not, I just meant that we are not going to need what we, when you have 10 candidates and let's get it down to three. We're not going to, I don't think we'll need to do that, no. So, okay, so who, I, you know, whether, the question would be, would we, um, have a public interview with the teachers, or would that be?
Well, you, you, first of all, you definitely would have a public interview with the school committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
That might be preceded by stakeholder interviews held earlier in the day or earlier at some point.
Okay.
Rep, by members, rep, that would include members of the community and members of the faculty. And you don't need to determine any more than that, uh, but I would suggest, uh, one model for doing this is to interview the candidates, uh, at 2:30 in the afternoon by the faculty members.
Mm-hmm.
At 4:30 to 6:00 by community members, and the school committee from 7:30 to, when I, that would work?
Yes, it would.
Or do it on a Saturday and stretch it out.
Glenn, I just have a quick question. It, it sounds like we're certainly going to start with the internal, um, interview process, but if we were going to cast a net, when is the point at which you lose the fish?
Well, uh, first of all, if you are, if you're going to rule out the internal candidates, you would go through this process and determine, uh, that now that we've interviewed the internal candidates, you know, what is the pleasure of the school committee? And if the pleasure of the school committee was, "We really need to cast a wide net because we don't like what we've seen so far," then when you've concluded your interviews, you just start over again with a, with a second search process, inviting the universe of candidates to apply.
Right, but what I'm asking is, in terms of the school year, at what point do all of the good candidates, you know, is there a time? Is it January, February, March, April?
You want to have a decision made preferably before the end of the calendar year. Last year, there were four or five really stellar candidates for the superintendency in Massachusetts, and they were all grabbed up by Christmas, including, by the way, two districts that kept changing their meeting time to earlier in the day so that, you know, so that I could beat you out for that candidate. And you move, that's how competitive it got, but, uh, uh, the pools, as I say, aren't that strong, and, and if there were five or six truly outstanding candidates emerging in any given year, I would suggest that, uh, people. year, I would suggest that, uh, uh, people need to act more quickly. But, but absolutely have a selection made by the end of December or the end of January. That gives you time for a transition, a mentored transition or a facilitated transition, and the last thing you wanna be doing is going out to search on the first of April to find somebody in June, or possibly somebody in September, when, as the Hills Brothers Coffee commercial used to say, "All the good ones were sold to Hills Brothers, and I had to broker everything else to somebody else."
I don't know that commercial.
A minute?
Um...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Could I, could I, um, make a suggestion that we come up with some dates? To, um, and Glenn suggested post, you know, by the fifteenth? Take applicant-
Put your vacancy notice out by the fifteenth.
Right.
And if it's an internal vacancy notice, you don't need to do any advertising, you don't need to put it on websites, but you might wanna let your community know what you're doing.
Absolutely. Community's right there.
And give everybody two weeks to, to apply.
Yep, okay. So eleventh-
Candidates as a class of people are a procrastinating lot, and give them some time to get through Thanksgiving and the rest of the week.
So by the thirtieth of the month?
Close sometime on or about the thirtieth, and then start scheduling interviews, uh, within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
The people who do well are the people who expedite this and act rather than process.
Okay. So we would be having, um, our interviews, our vetting process as early as the first week in December? Robin, you have another question? Dana has another question.
I was just thinking, as, as Glenn had said, maybe having meetings on a Saturday, given that we would be scheduling interviews in December, which tends to get a little busy, we might wanna start looking at those dates now so that we don't interview. But I mean, what I guess, what I'm suggesting is to have these meetings on a Saturday, where it can be one after another, um...
You mean, start earlier in the day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and, and give people an opportunity, especially if we're interviewing more than one.
Right, so the first, um, Saturday in December is December fifth.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Early.
What? You have plans later in the day?
Yes, I do.
Well, I think, well, um, let's, let's set Saturday, December fifth, as our date for vetting the candidates.
I'm actually unavailable that day.
Okay, I don't know whether we should, I, I... I don't know what to say. I'd like to, um...
Are we just doing this on a Saturday, or are we doing?
It would be all done in one day.
It'd be all done in one day.
Mm-hmm.
They go for it.
Well, unless we're looking at, I think, I think what we need to do is look at the district calendar, too, 'cause I know, you know, the PTA's start having their holiday things, and we don't wanna interfere with that.
No, we don't, but the one in Salisbury's on the twenty-first of November.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if we're earlier in the, the month, it might be a little bit better, but I'm just thinking, if we want to move this rather quickly, having it on a Saturday might be beneficial, and if, we're, we're three weeks away right now from December sixth, so we really need to start advertising this if this is what our plan of action is.
My concern about a Saturday is that I think that first Saturday in December, there are, is a lot that's going on in the district on that day.
That's what I'm asking.
And so I, I'd be concerned that we wouldn't allow, we wouldn't, um, have a date that our community members could be involved, because I believe Pine Grove has a, their big craft thing that takes place the, most of the day. Newbury Elementary has something going on, actually, Newbury Elementary, I think, has two things going on that day.
That's what I mean. We need to look at the district calendar to make sure we're, we need to pick a date that
I agree.
Doesn't have anything else.
I agree, I agree.
Well, then maybe a Saturday doesn't work, 'cause I don't know if I wanna wait another week.
Yeah, well, maybe it doesn't, but I'm, I'm just trying to think of, if we're trying to make this...
If I, if I remember correctly from, um, the search for Mr. Farmer, there was a day of the week that was picked, and there were several meetings scheduled throughout the day in different locations. Parents could be involved, PTA was involved, school council was involved, so there were different times, different options, and then if I remember correctly, at the end of the day was the...
This, yes, it was.
Yeah.
Which is the timeframe, I think, that Glenn-
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so maybe that would be an option, because it would give people multiple times during the day, different locations, if, if we did it that way, that they could be part of it.
If we close out the applications on the thirtieth, um, could be, could we be vetting on Wednesday, the second of December? Could we be going on Wednesday, the second? Christopher?
Technically, we can post this tomorrow.
Okay.
And we use School Spring.
Okay.
That will give you a closing on the twenty-fifth.
I see what you're saying, okay.
And that might make Saturday, the twenty-eighth, available.
I see. Does that work better for people? Paul?
I would prefer a Saturday.
Okay, me, too.
If you're talking Saturday over Thanksgiving weekend...
Yeah, that's...
That's, I don't think that's gonna fly.
I, I wouldn't be able to do it.
At least that allows for Wednesday or Thursday of the next week.
Well, then, then why don't we, why don't we set December, still post it tomorrow and still, but go with Wednesday, December second, then, if we can't do a Saturday?
Can we be sure that the school committee will be done at seven at night?
Yes, yeah, we'll do ours at seven o'clock, yes.
Their internal candidates, um, faculty tend to like to meet right after school.
Right. Paul meant our part of it, at seven, yeah. But, yeah, the, they, yes, we, yeah, we know that. Thank you, yes.
Parents might as well, get them in sooner and then do a final interview on the Saturday.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, oh, do our interview on the Saturday?
Our interview on the Saturday, and let the, uh, let the faculty and parents meet the candidates during the weekend.
But the problem was that, that even the committee is on the Saturdays. It was, the, the school district has things going on on the Saturday. That's why.
So then you could do it on any other day?
Yeah, so we would, we would, um, go with Wednesday, the second, and have the, um, faculty interview vetting process earlier in the afternoon, and, um, community members, depending on how much time we wanted to allot for that, could either be-
Faculty members are not subject to the open meeting law, they could meet earlier, too.
Okay.
Superintendent interview with the public is not subject to the open meeting law. The school committee is.
Right. All right, so it's posted tomorrow, or, and we close interviews on the twenty-fifth, two weeks from tomorrow, and, um, we will do our public interviews on December second. With the school committees, the school, our interview would be done at seven o'clock on Wednesday night, the second. Is that schedule satisfactory to the committee?
Yes. Next question.
I was-
How do we determine the makeup of the parent panel?
You'd open that up.
You'd, you, yeah.
Have an interview and let anyone who wants to come post questions.
I've already been contacted by CPAC, wanting to participate.
So will there be a leader, who will run and organize?
You might wanna have somebody moderating the interview.
Yeah.
Usually a school committee member.
I think we'll, um, this, I, I think it's something that possibly, you and I could talk about as far as where and when, um...
So sometime between the twenty-fifth, when it closes, and December second, the format?
We can set out the format right away, because I don't see, we need to, I don't think we need to wait for that.
No, I mean, how, what the schedule will be like on December second?
Mm-hmm.
And who would
Right.
Run those.
I think it would be-
If you have more than one candidate, you're gonna have to plan for more time, or...
Right.
I just wanted to say, I think it would be important to notify the school councils and the PTA right away.
Yep.
Asking for them to, you know, make sure that somebody can attend from, representing from all the schools.
Mm-hmm. We'll have that out, um, well, certainly this week. Anything else? Okay.
I'm sorry to be, so we'll have a teacher panel?
And a co-
Care and community, both intertwined, or whatever.
Yes, so there'll be three.
Okay, so
Including us.
Two panels during the day and the Sunday.
And, right. Two groups during the day, and, yes, Paul?
Do you wanna spend, send a special invite to our town leaders?
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And, um, I, if, if it's okay, by the end of the week, I will, or certainly at least by the, over the weekend, send out maybe some specifics to all of you, just about numbers of people and potential timeframes. But our time will be at seven o'clock on the second. Any more questions for Glenn?
Can I just ask one technical thing? Would, if it's being posted internally, would you expect letters of reference?
Probably recommend that the internal candidates be asked to have letters of reference.
Okay.
And will we, just as far as the, the que- the questions that we're gonna want to-
Now, what I, what I would probably do, could download, if anybody's, you know, I would, I would send you our question guide
Mm-hmm.
And suggest that the members of the school committee who wish to, uh, develop questions, uh, prepare them, if they, you know, you don't necessarily need to have them submitted in advance, be, unless, unless you did, but...
Well, what we did before was each committee member asked a question. Each person went around and asked a question. So if that were, um, what we were gonna do, which I think was a good way to go, that's everybody, um, had a chance to speak, then the questions would need to be submitted so we all had a different question to ask.
But it's only nine questions.
I know, but we might all ask the same.
No, 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 I would, I would suggest that should there be follow-ups to the question?
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't-
That you not limit yourself to nine questions.
No, but each person would at least ask one question.
So, uh, I'll, I can send you
Mm-hmm.
Question guide, and then you can ask the members to, uh, send the questions to you, and if you want some help compiling them or editing them or organizing them, you can certainly talk to us.
Okay.
Can I just ask Glenn, uh, for the benefit of people who are not accustomed to interviewing, does your list of questions include those which may not be asked?
Yes, actually, our question guide does include those questions which may not be asked.
Monique?
Glenn, are there question guides for community members and faculty?
You know, um, there are not, uh...
I'm sure MASC would have some sug- I mean, um...
Well, I'm sure that the teachers-
MTA would have some suggestions, Tia, yes.
MTA will be very happy to help you with this process.
Yes.
My experience is that community members are pretty good at coming up with, with good questions. Some of them are broader than the very specific areas that you may hone in on because you know this stuff, but I, and, and to the extent that those questions are addressed by the community, that can guide you. This is a, you know, this is a very important decision, so, uh, you wanna think, uh, you wanna ask as many questions as you feel are appropriate, not be limited by...
Mm-hmm. Right.
Especially if it's broadcast local.
It will be. Well, if you think of anything else after you leave tonight, let me know.
Can I just make it clear, I misspoke slightly. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, I don't think I can post it tomorrow.
I wouldn't, I thought you had some sort of magic button you were gonna push, okay. Well, if there are no further questions, could we have a motion to adjourn? Could we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much, we'll see you next week.